Well, welcome. Here we are, the middle of the silly season. And I've only ever had Kevin Rudd actually look it up and find out that's a compliment, not a derogatory phrase. But let's start with an introduction.
First of all, Al, thank you for having me on this evening. It's a great pleasure to be here. My name is Patrick Holland. I am a resident of Milford. I'm also a current member of the Milford School Committee. I did serve a term as the chairman as well. And I am a candidate for selectmen in this April's election.
So I'll start and end the show with the same question I've always started and ended any of the candidate shows. Pat, I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
That's a great, that's a great question. I'm from Milford as well, and I have a great deal of love for this community. I have a lot of passion for this, for this town. And I've served in the school committee, and I've enjoyed my service in the school committee. But there are some problems that I can't address from the school committee. And I think I have a skill set that I could apply towards fixing some of the other problems that we have in our town. And I've spoken about them briefly in the newspaper, on the radio. And I would say that Main Street is a concern to me. I remember a time not so long ago when you could purchase anything that you needed right on Main Street. So we would shop for our casual clothes, the Tiger's Den. We'd go around the corner to the Gob Shop for our more formal clothes or a winter coat. Of course, Spillons is still there, thankfully.
Coming home from school, running into Grants to get that freshly-made popcorn.
That's a touch before my time.
No, that was mine. When I was, when we had to walk all the way home to the Heights, and you walked right through Main Street, and there was Grants, and you could get fresh popcorn.
Well, you know, I think that's, that's a great point. So when I was a child, there was a reason for a child to be downtown after school. You know, so we could leave the school building, and I went to Stacy School, which was then called Middle School West, and I went to Middle School East. And there was a reason to be downtown. There was a joke shop. There was a pharmacy. There were, there still is a music store, thankfully. But there were places that the community could go, that the community could shop, and they could engage, and they could spend time, not only their money, but also their time. And they added a vibrancy to Main Street. And that's been gone for a long time now. And I've, I'm a practicing attorney, but I also have 14 years of experience in retail marketing and development. So I've either worked for, or I've worked with, large corporations that distributed their products solely through independent retailers. And so I've spent 14 years helping independent retailers become more successful, helping them find locations that will help their businesses thrive. And I have a unique set of skills. I have a unique professional experience that doesn't exist on the Board of Selectmen today. And that, that experience fostering retail sales, fostering retail businesses, and fostering success, I can use those skills to help the existing businesses on Main Street become multi-generational. I can hopefully use those skills to increase foot traffic, so more retail businesses will want to locate on Main Street. And I think that we can add back that vibrancy. You know, I think it's very concerning to me, the way businesses sort of open and close there on, on Main Street. You know, we look at a business like Milford National Bank that closed a branch last year on Main Street because they couldn't have, they didn't have enough foot traffic there to have it be economically reasonable to maintain that location. And this is a business that's been in Milford since the 1880s, the 1860s. And so that's a real problem, and I think it's a problem that we need to address. It's a problem that doesn't have any short-term solutions. We have to be very thoughtful in the way we develop our Main Street, the way that we develop our downtown. We have to have a long-range plan that works towards goals. And we have to realize that, you know, sometimes we'll have access to grant money, or we'll have opportunities to fix things that maybe we shouldn't avail ourselves of those opportunities because they're not working towards our goal. They're not working towards our, our plan. So if the, if the people of Milford choose me to represent them on the Board of Selectmen, what I would like to do is to begin the process of putting together that long-term plan and bringing in the members of the community that we need to make downtown be vibrant again.
But now, people will ask, I mean, you always get, you know, the Finance Committee the same questions. Are you raising to the two-and-a-half limit? Are you funding all the articles we need? And do we have a surplus? And we answer yes, yes, yes. Everybody says, well, things are good. Why would somebody want to change what seems to be working? Because all we ever hear is, "It's working."
Milford is financially stable, and Milford has been financially stable for a long time. And of course, I've been a part of that, right? So as a member of the school committee, I've been responsible for, for the largest town department. And the budget for the school department is by far the largest part. I think it's somewhere upwards of 60%
Yes.
of the town's budget. And we've been in a position in the school department when other towns were laying off their teachers. We didn't have to. I look at a town like Franklin. We have many teachers and administrators that come from the town of Franklin. And they would have years where 25% of their staff would get pink slip. Now, most of them would be hired back because they found room in, in that budget. And we've never been faced with that. We've never been in a situation where, where we're so worried financially that we have to take away services from our students or from our citizens. And that's all wonderful. And I've been a part of that, and I'm proud to have been a part of that. But it doesn't mean that's enough. Financial stability isn't the goal of living in a community. The goal of living in a community is to engage in the community. It's to meet your neighbors. It's to make your community a better place. And so if we can foster a community spirit, if we can help grow the way people in our community connect by having a more vibrant and alive downtown, then I think it's going to be a place, Milford will be a place, that more people want to live and stay. I think my primary motivation, honestly, is to help Milford be a place where my children want to come back and raise their families. You know, I would love to, 40 years from now, to be sitting at my dining room table with all of my children around and my grandchildren running around because they think Milford is a wonderful place. They think that Milford is a place that they want to spend their lives, just like I wanted to spend mine here.
You know, it's funny because I just told my oldest. I said, Lexi, I think finally you're a true Milfordian. You're fourth-generation Milford, and you live within two miles of your mother. But what you're saying, at night I go home and I get to see my grandson.
Yeah.
She's, she's already told me that I missed six days. He's almost six months old, so I'm already missing him, averaging one day a month, which isn't too bad in my mind. But it really does come down to loving Milford and wanting your family
Right.
to have the opportunity.
You know, this town, it's funny. You know, family was always, was always, was always impressed upon me that family is the most important part of your life. I mean, my father said that to me from, from the earliest I can remember. And, and I think that that's true. I also feel like, because I have so many connections to this community, that the greater Milford community is really like my sort of larger family. And, and I hope that my children feel that same way. I hope that they have that same connectedness. Because when you have multi-generations of families living in one community, the ties are so tight, and the bonds are so tight. People are more likely to behave in a way that's good for the community because they want the community to be a place where their children stay. So I couldn't agree more.
You mentioned that we're so financially stable. Do you see yourself ever looking at a two-and-a-half override or a debt exclusion?
Well, you know, those are, those are dirty words, Al. I'm, fiscally, I'm relatively conservative. I think that, I always said, when I first ran for school committee, I said that I would spend every, every penny of the school budget as if it were my own. And I've done that. And I think that we have a responsibility to spend taxpayers' money in a way that benefits taxpayers and in a way that's not excessive. And so everything that I do, I look from the standpoint of, well, if this were my money, would I spend it this way? And if the answer is no, then, then I probably wouldn't do it. And so you go back to the question about a debt exclusion or a two-and-a-half override. Well, I don't carry, I don't carry excessive credit card debt. I don't buy things that I can't pay for. And so that's what I do in my personal life, and that's what I do in my, in my public service as well.
Now, what do you think of the, let's pick the three biggest challenges, if you're a selectman, that you think Milford will face in the future?
Well, I mean, first, I've already, I've already spoken about it. I've spoken about it at length, and I probably will, I probably will, honestly, for the next 10 years, is revitalization of Main Street. We've had so much economic development happening on the periphery of our town, but it's really skipped over our Main Street area. And I think that that, that takes away from the sense of community. And so I think that's a, a very, very big issue.
Number two?
Number two would be technology. I have had a front row seat of the challenges that our town has faced in the area of technology. Now, thankfully, after a number of years, we are finally making some strides. I think if you, if you've been watching the school committee meetings, you'll know that we had the technology, our technology leadership was taken over by the town some years ago. And we've had some great difficulty, both the town and the schools, working together, finding a, a way for, to come up with a technology plan that really does service the needs of both the town and for the school department. And we've gotten to a point now where we're finally making progress. But I think the progress that we're making is infrastructure progress that will be short-term if we don't think thoughtfully about planning our technology for the future. And I look at a lot of the companies that I either consult for or have worked for, and I look at the way that they structure their technology departments. And, and they have, there's a very common approach. And so you have someone who's at the top who's making decisions, they're making decisions for the infrastructure of the company.
Strategic planning.
Exactly. They're, they're planning. They're planning, they're looking forward. When should we be bringing hardware online? When should we be rolling it out? When is it at end of life? And then they have, in each of the, in each of the departments that work in the company, they have sort of specialized people that are working to get some of that technology done. And they, they outsource when there's a big project. I mean, there are plenty of contractors that we can get to come in, and they can adequately service our, our needs. And, and we can, we can put together a technology structure, I think, that's going to work, that's going to work for, for our town.
Now, but when we look at technology, the last couple of years, well, including this year, we're making some pretty heavy investment. Luckily, the E-rate
Yeah.
that, you know, basically matches dollar for $2.
Right.
So we're paying a third.
Right.
Like this year, we're planning on spending about $300,000 in the school of Milford money. But that's really, if we spend all 300, that's going to be $900,000 investment.
Right. Right. So we're, we're, we're spending $300,000, but really getting a million dollars' worth of technology upgrades in the school department. And so all of our school buildings are going to have the most modern technology infrastructure when we go into our next year, or so long as the plans that we've put in place get carried through in the way that we want them to. We'll go into the 2016, 2017 year in the school department with a modern technology infrastructure. But the problem with that is, the infrastructure is going to be outdated by the time it's
In three years.
Yeah. So if we're not, if we're not looking forward and we're not planning ahead the day that that network goes online, then we're already falling behind. And I think that we need to be proactive and thoughtful in our approach. And frankly, look to the experts in the field to help us figure out the right way to move forward. You know, I know, I know some things about technology. I certainly don't claim to be an expert, but I've seen what's worked in other places. Having had the opportunity to work for companies with 2,000 and 5,000 employees, I know, I know what the structure can look like and has looked like. And I think that we can be thoughtful and find a way to make some hybrid of a privatized model work for us.
Well, it seems like realistically, you know, you're going to have, even today, existing, you have selectmen who were school committee members. So why can't they work together to get this thing done?
It was, it's, it's a very, I don't know. I don't know why it's been such a challenge. I'll be perfectly honest with you, Al. It was very frustrating to me over the course of the summer, you know, what was happening with our technology and the way things weren't moving forward in the ways that they should. So I don't want to spend too much time thinking about the past and why it hasn't worked.
I'm more worried about how are we going to fix it for the future?
Well, I think that we have to have open lines of communication, and I think we have to have thoughtfulness. And I think that we need to come together as a community and have members of the community who are experts in this advise us, those of us who don't know a lot about technology, of the best way to move forward. That's one of the great things about our town, right? We have plenty of people who are willing to volunteer their time to the town to help make things right. And anytime that we've ever put our hands up as members of the school committee looking for experts, there's been, there's been just a wonderful response of people wanting to
So the rumor that the school committee wants their pay doubled is not unfounded. And it was three years ago, I said, I think we ought to triple the salaries of the Finance Committee. Mark looks at three times zero. I said, right, but it'll make me feel better.
No, you know, it's funny, it's funny that you mention that because the school committee is a volunteer position, and it is a lot of time. But it's also a great way to stay connected to the community. I mean, you speak to so many people, and you speak to them about something that's so close to their hearts, their children. And so it, it's a great way to learn about our community. So it's been a wonderful experience.
So challenge number one, life downtown.
Right.
Number two, technology. Can you think of a third one that would?
Well, you know, I'll tell you, one thing that, that concerns me greatly, and one thing that I think that some people don't necessarily have a lot of visibility on, is what's happening with some of the illegal housing that's still occurring in our town. And this isn't illegal housing to say that it's, we have building owners who are allowing illegal housing, but we have tenants in those properties who are doing things like shift sleeping. So the owner of the building says, "You can have no more than five people in this building." And so you may not have more than five people in this building, and they check to make sure that there are no more than five people in this building. But we have people who are doing shift sleeping. So, you know, while one person sleeps in a bed, or while five people sleep in a bed, the other five are out walking around or finding some other place to go during, during the day. And that's, that's a very difficult problem to get our hands around because I think that that is, you know, our codes, our, our housing codes aren't meant to support.
But why is that our business? The Prospect Heights, that's what we grew up with.
Right.
You know, Draper had people, you know, hot bunking.
Right.
Where literally one work day shift, one work night shift, and they bust them to one socket in other areas.
Sure.
So why is the fact that you're going to share your room any of our concern?
Well, it's our concern because we don't want to go backwards. I mean, people also used to work 14-hour days, and they also used to employ 12-year-old children, 10-year-old children, to work in some of these mills. And that's not the way that, that we want to be. And we don't want to have, not, not only is it a problem from a housing standpoint in our community, but it's also a quality of life problem for the people who are forced to live in conditions like that. You know, so it's, it's more than just, you know, wanting to say clean up an illegal problem that's happening in, in Milford. I mean, those, those people are people as well, and we don't want them to have a poor quality of life either. And I think that as a community, we need to find a way to make sure that those illegal housing situations are cleaned up to the best of our ability.
Well, you also have a very large safety issue.
Yeah.
You know, when you think about it, if you have 100 amp service or 150 amp service coming into your house, you're expecting one kitchen.
Right.
You know, when we were in school, if you remember, you couldn't have a microwave, a hot plate, you know, all these things because it was a fire hazard when you have three kitchens trying to operate, right?
Well, it's, it's heartbreaking when you come into contact with some of these living conditions in schools, and you find out that you have a little girl or a little boy who is living in one room with, you know, one or both of their parents and two or three of their own siblings. And they have in that room a microwave and a hot plate and a tea kettle, and, you know, someone sleeps on the floor, and who has to share a bed. And it's not, it's not a good, there aren't good living conditions for those people. And it's heartbreaking when you hear a child talk about that. And if we can do things to prevent that, if we can find creative ways to fix things like shift sleeping, it's going to be a better community. I think, you know, a great example would be what the chief of police did in town when it comes to opioids and drug dealers. So there were a lot of drug dealers that were coming from Framingham, and they come into our town. And so the chief went and spoke to the Framingham Police.
Well, they came because they were well-known in Framingham, so they couldn't stand on a street corner and apply their trade.
Right. They, they couldn't ply their wares in Framingham any longer, and so they came to Milford. And so the chief thought of a very creative solution. He went and found the police officers that knew them and brought them to Milford to find them.
And they got off the bus in Milford and said, "Oh, shice."
"I'm going somewhere else."
Yeah.
And so I think that it's creative solutions like that that we need to entertain, and we need to find new ways to fix some of these problems because they're not going to fix themselves. And, and if we just let them continue without making a concerted effort to correct them, it's not really going to help the quality of life for residents of the town or people who may come here because they have no other choice, and they end up living in a very poor situation.
You mentioned opioids. I mean, obviously, that's a huge crisis.
It's terrifying.
And, you know, when the chief came on, the stereotype of southern Los Angeles and dark alleys and, you know, drug dealers are all out there. All of a sudden, you got to understand it could be your neighbor's son or daughter who just hurt themselves playing a sport.
Right.
Any thoughts on what we can do?
It's, it's a terrifying crisis. I have to tell you, I was, I was shocked when I heard that, and I'm not sure if this is the correct certifying body. I think it was the FDA, certified opioids for children as young as 11 years old, for pain medication, you know, not, not for, not for abuse necessarily. And I mean, we just think about what young age we're introducing these children. These children who have disposable income either through their parents or have access to their parents' money, who are accessing these drugs, and they have an opportunity to get hooked on these things. I think that there's a recent documentary. It was, I forget which network it was on, but it was about opioid abuse on Cape Cod. And I would recommend anyone who has the opportunity to see that.
That was frightening.
It's horrifying. It's heartbreaking. You know, watching these people who are just regular, middle-class kids.
It's your neighbor.
It's your, it's your neighbor, it's your nephew, it's your niece, it's, you know, God forbid, your son or your daughter. And these people are finding their way into these opioids through these prescription pills, and then the pills become too expensive. They can't get the quantity that they find that, you know, heroin is much cheaper, and it's much easier to get access to. And, and so now we have someone who is, you know, popping pills illegally, is becoming an intravenous drug user. And it's horrifying. And, and we, we have to work towards stopping. And I know the governor has, has allocated a big part of his budget towards, towards opioid programs. And I think that we have to keep very, very close eyes on it because it's one of the most concerning trends that we have right now, not just in Massachusetts, but in, in America at large.
Some of the people in Milford are saying we should invest money in having, I guess, the terrible opioid counselors. What are your thoughts?
Look, I think that counseling is, is a wonderful thing. But anytime that we start talking about adding new services, we have to decide where that money is going to come from. And like anything else that we do, you know, we can't afford to buy things that we can't pay for, or at least I don't buy things that I can't pay for. And as a town, we have to do the same thing. And so if this crisis has risen to the point that that's necessary, and that, that may or may not be the case, I don't know. I would want to speak to people who are more experts in the field than I. Then we have to decide what we're going to sacrifice to make that happen, you know? But again, that's, that's a community decision. That's something that, that we need to do thoughtfully and do together.
Same thing, we, a lot of interest now in a bus loop.
Yeah. Public transportation. It's, I am a huge proponent of public transportation. I lived in England for a while, and it was amazing to me that I could get to a place that was 1,000 miles away and only ever walk 300 yards. And so I am an enormous advocate of, of public transportation. I think that public transportation in Milford in particular would benefit a, a number of people in our community. It would certainly benefit the hospital that we know. Anyone who attended the transportation meeting that we had recently at the senior center knows that there are people in other communities that need to get to our hospital and have difficulty doing so now. I also think it would be a wonderful, a wonderful bonus for people who have, who have developmental disabilities, you know, that may have difficulty getting around on their own. And it would provide them an opportunity to get to jobs and to get to work, and to give them a measure of independence that they don't currently have. And that's a wonderful thing. We should be doing that. I also think it would be an enormous boon to the elderly. I mean, just giving the elderly an opportunity to not only get to the hospital or their doctor's visits, but also the grocery store, you know? And just to continue to engage, you know, in a life that they've enjoyed so much for so long. And so, I mean, there are a lot of benefits. And of course, there are some choices that we have to make too because there is, there is a cost to that. And, and we have to figure out the right way to pay for those types of services. And we also need to learn more about how the services are going to work. I know at the Public Transportation Forum, the public forum, they were talking about different ways that the bus loop could be set up, whether it was a bus loop that would be exclusive to Milford, or maybe it were, would start in Framingham and then circulate through Milford and go back to Framingham. And I think that, you know, we need to look at these, we need to look at all of these options very carefully, and we need to look at the cost very carefully and put into plan, put into place a plan that's, that's best for, for Milford. But I just, I'm an enormous, enormous proponent of public transportation.
Well, I remember the first time the whole idea of bus service was brought out. I was one of the FinCom members who was very confused because it was being promoted as now people in Milford could go shopping in Framingham.
Right, right.
I remember asking the question, saying, "Wait a minute, you want me to take Milford taxpayer money and help people not buy from Milford vendors?"
Right.
I didn't understand the benefit
Right.
to me as a Milford person.
Right.
But obviously, if it's bringing in people to the hospital and helping our seniors and, you know, our residents who need a little extra help, that's a whole different.
Yeah, you know, and, and I think that's, that's one of the reasons why it's, it's so enticing, you know, because we're giving, we're creating a service that's going to help Milford residents. And that's a wonderful thing. And also it gives the opportunity for someone because this, this bus loop would run, you know, not only through Milford, and I would prefer a loop that ran through Milford exclusively that didn't necessarily travel through other towns, but connected to other towns. So if someone wanted to use the bus to commute to their job, whether by train, by coming through Framingham or in some other way, that's great too. I think all of those services could be there. But I think first and foremost, it needs to benefit Milford. It needs to benefit the citizens of Milford.
I hadn't thought about that. But yeah, you could extend it to somebody who wants to take the train into Boston to work.
Sure. I mean, if, if you didn't have access to a car, and you could pick up a bus to Town Hall and change at the Hollison Town Line, and change at the Ashland Town Line, and get into Framingham and take the commuter rail, I think that's great. That, that's a wonderful use, and we should have that. I mean, that's, that's the type of service that you have in Europe. I mean, if you want to get from one place to another, you can do it by busing, by train. But again, we have to do it the right way. We have to do it in a way that we can pay for, and we have to do it in a way so it benefits the people in Milford who, who need that service.
We'll have to learn how to say "mind the gap." Because the first thing I had to learn in the underground
Right.
was what the heck is this "mind the gap"? When you look at Milford, if you had the opportunity to add some programs, and you could fund them, because obviously, you know, funding them would be important, can you think of anything you'd like to see come to Milford besides downtown?
Well, you know, I think what I'd like to see is more community organization. So we have a wonderful bike trail, and we have a newly dredged pond, and we have some beautiful parks, and we have a farmer's market, and we have, we have all of these wonderful, we have all these wonderful community organizations. And I would like to see sort of an office that was working together to put some connectedness between all of those organizations. I think that when those organizations work towards a common goal together, they can achieve a lot more. And I think that that lot more that I'd like to achieve is a greater sense of community and a greater sense of community connectedness. So, you know, if I were to have unlimited funding, I would work on something like that. I would also pave every road in town. I want every road to be billiard-smooth and beautiful with, with fresh, clean pipes underneath. But now we're talking something that's, that's pretty far-fetched.
Well, but I mean, we put an extra half million every year above chapter ninety.
Yeah.
I don't know that we ever really get ahead.
Right.
But we're hoping we don't fall behind too much.
Yeah, I mean, you know, roads are sort of a a big issue for me. You know, I mean, we live in a a wealthy enough town that that we should be able to pave our our main roads. You know, I remember I was so pleased, there was a there was a school committee meeting three years ago where I thanked Scott Christofouli for for paving Spruce Street before school started. Because it was it was in such, it was in such tough shape, you know. So I mean, the the infrastructure, the infrastructure, of course, is 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 very important. These are all the small things that go into making, you know, a town alive and and livable, you know. The small pieces that you may not notice every day, but if you know someone is is focusing on them and and making constant improvements to them. It's a it's a a sense of well-being that that you feel and becomes part of your experience living here, and I want everyone to experience that.
A Pat Holland on the Selectmen's Board. Would much change? You add a new body, the dynamic shifts.
Yeah, you know, it it's funny, I think that. What I like to do and and some of the stuff that I did when I was on the school committee is, I I'm not a big fan of of politics as usual. You know, I I think that it's important that everybody works together and and shares ideas and doesn't become very protective. Of what their little box is, and I think that 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 happens a lot. You know, when you're having, when you have people with different personalities and they all share a seat on the same board. And and the people of Milford put them all together, so there's no choice in who you sit next to, you know. I think that one thing that I learned as I was serving on the school committee was was diplomacy. That that even if I don't initially agree with an idea, that I I owe it to the people of Milford to to listen to what. To what that idea could do for us and to try and compromise, either introduce my own parts to it or to change what my own opinion is. To try and make that better, and so, you know, I know I don't have all the answers. I know that I have a unique skill set, and I know that I have unique experiences that other members of the Board of Selectmen don't have. But I know that I don't have all the answers, and I don't pretend I have all the answers. But what I will do is take a very, very thoughtful approach towards finding answers, and I will listen to people's ideas. And I will address them and treat them with the respect they deserve.
Well, I remember the year when you were chairman. And the school committee came in and it was two hundred and fifty thousand dollar. Let's call it discrepancy between what the school said you absolutely needed or the sun wouldn't shine and the moon wouldn't rise.
Right.
And what we said we could afford.
Right.
And I remember looking at you laughing, saying, why are we having this meeting? You know what's going to end up. You're going to find a hundred and some thousand out of your forty-three million, and we're going to find a hundred and some thousand out of our fifty million. And we'll compromise.
Right, right, which is which is the only way forward. You know, it's not, it's not, well, I don't, I disagree with you and so therefore you're wrong. It's very possible that I can disagree with somebody and and their opinion is perfectly valid and they're not wrong, I just happen to disagree. You know, and and I think compromise isn't isn't a bad thing, I think that, especially in town government. You know, we can't behave in town government like those people do down in Washington DC. You know, I mean, they get so protective, they're they're career politicians, you know, and so they're they're protecting their own little fiefdoms. And they want to make sure that they always have a seat at the table because that's their life and that's their their well-being. And I don't view town government like that, you know, town government, you're not, we're not professional politicians in town government. You know, we're just, we're people who care about this community, who want to try and make a difference. And and it's our responsibility to listen to those that are also elected to sit next to us. And and find a solution to the to the problem that that will solve the problem and, you know, perhaps not everyone is is satisfied with. And I think that any negotiation or any compromise, you know, if one party is entirely happy, then you probably didn't compromise enough. And and I'm I'm a big proponent of sort of finding that that middle ground, because other people's experiences are just as valid as my own.
Well, I remember you walked in the room and I said, Pat, why are we doing this? What's the number, a hundred and, and you put your head down and I can't talk to you. And at the end, you said, a hundred and eight, okay.
Well, you know, and and it's it's true, and there's, you know, there's also a certain value to demonstrating to people, you know, what what we think we could do if we had. Some more funding, you know, what we think that we could do if if we could fund an additional program. But that's why it's so important to work with the Finance Committee, because the Finance Committee, we have eyes in the School Department, and we know what the School Department can do. But we also trust that the members of the Finance Committee are looking at other departments, and they're seeing what other departments need. And and members of the Finance Committee like yourself have an ability to say, well, you know what, this year, we don't, we don't need another fire truck. So we can fund this, but next year, we are going to need a fire truck, and so we can't. And so it's just that openness and that discussion, that's how we come to good decisions, and we keep all of the services that Milford needs running online.
Big projects that are coming ahead, Middle School East. Any vision thoughts?
Well, you know, it's it's funny, if you listen to some of the meetings that happened with the Middle School East School reuse. Our options are unfortunately more limited than I would have liked to have been. You know, not that I was a proponent proponent of knocking down the building, but apparently the building is built like a bomb shelter, you couldn't take it down. It would have to come down brick by brick, much like Consigly did when they moved the old St. Mary's Elementary School. So so that's not an option, and not that we ever considered that, but that's not an option. You know, for us to to fully upgrade that facility, I mean, we'd have to gut the building, I mean, it would just be an enormous.
Ten to twelve million.
An enormous cost, and it's a cost that we're we're probably not ready to bear. So based upon all the information that I've heard so far, it will probably end up being some sort of a mixed town use building. Which is going to give a little bit of space, I mean, Town Hall is maxed out, as you well know. We have, we have a daycare program at the high school that perhaps could use some more space. Not that I'm advocating any one way or another for it, but I I do think that as a mixed use property, because that's the most economical. Way to use that property, I think we can, we could put it to good use.
We're also limited because of parking.
Sure.
You know, when they say, what would be your ultimate dream, that somebody comes in and buys the building, I don't care if they buy it for a dollar. And starts paying full taxes.
Right.
And we get all this revenue, on the surface, that feels good.
Right.
But then you say, okay, Town Hall's need isn't getting any smaller as we go forward.
That's right.
Even the high school, I mean, we moved in in seventy-four. I don't remember expanding the footprint of that high school.
No, no, and and that that building is at capacity.
So, you know, you turn around and say, moving central office out of there would give some room to the high school.
Right. I mean, there are, there are certainly lots of programs and lots of organizations that we have in town that could use that space. And if we can get them to use that space to relieve pressure on some of our other buildings. And and that's also an economical way, because we don't have to gut the entire property to to make that happen, you know. So as as an example, some people have said, well, you could put an assisted living, an assisted living home in there, it'd be a wonderful thing. Because, you know, people who who avail themselves of assisted living, they don't have cars.
They don't have cars, we don't need parking.
Right, except when you look at the cost of turning that building into an assisted living facility, you could go purchase a piece of land and build a steel building for it. You know, so it's not, it's it's unfortunately, some of the uses that we would like to see there, they aren't practical uses. And I think, you know, one thing about Milford that I I've always, I've always seen in in my life is that we tend to be pragmatic, we tend to be practical. And and if we can find a way to use it appropriately and not spend a fortune doing it, that that's probably the best way to go.
Water company.
Water company.
Any thoughts on water company?
Well. I am very concerned about the water company. I I think that the water company spent a lot of years supplying us with water, and we used to have the best. The best drinking water that that I'd ever tasted, certainly when I was a kid, I mean, there was no need for bottled water, I mean, it was, it was, it was pure and it was wonderful. You know, I've, ever since we had, in the past, I don't want to say six or seven years. I mean, there have been, there have been days when, you know, before the new plant came online, where the water coming out of my faucet was was brown. I mean, there were stains in in the tub and and in the sink, so obviously something was was very wrong there. And so we built this great, beautiful, you know, new water treatment plant. And the water treatment plant is is great. My worry about the water company is this, they spent many years without investing in the infrastructure of their business that they use to supply us with water. And then when they had to upgrade their entire system, we were on the hook for it. And they went and they got an enormous increase in their water rates. And so we went from having, you know, very clean, great water at an affordable price to a significantly higher price. And so I I am certainly open to any options that are on the table to make sure. That Milford isn't put in a position where thirty-five years from now, we have to spend, at that time, who knows, two hundred and fifty million dollars. Replacing an entire water treatment facility because it hadn't been upgraded in so many years. So, you know, I I'm certainly concerned about it, it's not, it's not a central portion of of my campaign. I I think that I'm open to looking at at all options there, and I certainly don't have it out for anyone at the water company. I mean, I think that they do provide us with great service, and they're good people. So it's it's not about, it's it's not about the people, and it's not about sort of trying to get revenge for. For any any water issues that we've had, but it's about looking at it very thoughtfully and saying, you know, how can we make sure? That the water company is serving our town the way we need it to. And and sort of all options on the table, in my opinion, and making sure that that happens, it's all about doing the right thing for Milford.
Now, everybody gets excited when you say immigrants. Milford has, you know, all of a sudden you have those Ecuadorians. And I laugh, I say, well, aren't they the new Brazilians? Who are the new Portuguese? Who are the new Italians?
Who are the new Irish? That's right, that's right.
If people are here legally.
Right.
Do we really have a problem with those?
No, I, you know, anyone who comes to this country legally, so my my family's been in, my family's been in Milford now for. Hundred and sixty-some odd years, I think, my my great, 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 I believe it's three or four greats. Grandfather came to fight in the Civil War, he was an indentured servant for a rich Boston family, and he was in artillery. And and he came to fight in the Civil War, and he fortunately survived the Civil War, and he came back and and he made his roots here in Milford. And and we've seen sort of wave upon wave of of immigrants come to this town, I mean, you already mentioned them, the Italians, the Portuguese. The Brazilians, and I think with each wave, you know, our our community has become a stronger and better community. You know, it it introduces a a new vigor and and a new sense of of, or a new aspect to our community that we didn't have before. You know, it's funny, when I went to college, I I met, I met a lot of people who didn't come from diverse communities. You know, they they didn't go to school with people who didn't look like them.
Right.
And, you know, I I think it's great that I had that experience. And I think the fact that Milford is is a town of immigrants and has always been a town of immigrants is one of the things that gives us strength. And so, you know, so long as, you know, someone is here legally and and they want to assimilate to our culture, I say, that's wonderful. I really do.
So now, as a town, what could we do? To help the legal immigrants in your mind? Because you can't deport people who are here illegally.
Right.
I mean, last time I looked, and Milford doesn't set immigration policy.
Right.
Can't deport them to Rhode Island or something.
Right, not as far as I know, I don't know.
I mean, you're the lawyer, but somehow I don't think we have the ability.
I'm I'm fairly certain that we do not have the ability to do that, yes.
Is there anything we can do to help the legal immigrants? And discourage the illegal activities of, you know, the one percent?
Well, I mean, how how have immigrants always become assimilated in our communities? It's through the schools. You know, we we offer programs to students, we help them learn English, we help them. And not, you know, not because we don't want them to speak the language of their homeland, but but because, you know, we want them to learn our language. So they can be a part of our community, so they can fit in and they can find a home, and they can contribute to our community. And so I I really feel like it starts through the schools. And that's another reason where it it leads back to, you know, sort of finding a way to eliminate some of this, some of this illegal housing. If you have an illegal housing community, you know, it becomes a transient population, you know, I mean, where are they bouncing from? They can't, we can't integrate them into our schools, we can't teach them our language, we can't teach them our customs, we can't help them be more like us. And and us become more like them, you know, I mean, I I I. If we can find a way to educate those people who are here legally, so we can help them learn the languages, so we can offer some language services perhaps to their parents. Who don't have an opportunity to go through the schools, I think that's always sort of the shortest path, but I mean, I think you know as well as I do. I mean, it only takes a generation or two to assimilate a population of people who want to assimilate, who want to be here. And so I think really the first step are our schools, and if we can, if we can help those kids learn English. And and we can get them participating in our schools, then their parents will want to do the same. And then twenty-five years from now, we're going to be talking about the next wave of immigrants that came to Milford.
Yeah, the new, 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 right. You know, and you look, because Milford, I was joking with the chief, saying, we've seen demonstrations. About the police force across the country. Milford had a demonstration about our police.
I was there.
Pretty proud.
Yeah.
What was the feeling then?
You know, it was, it was great, we wanted to show first responders how much they were valued. You know, if if you think, I think a a classic example of of how I picture a first responder when I when I think about it. You go back to those horrible, horrible videos of the Marathon bombing that happened in Boston a few years back. And and you look at what happened after the bombs exploded, where everyone was scattering. And everyone was trying to run as far away from that that smoke-filled area as they possibly could. And and you watch the first responders, the police officers and the firefighters, what were they doing? I mean, they were running.
They're running, they're playing salmon, they're running upstream.
Running into it, you know, and and so, you know, that's a sacrifice that those people make, our first responders make. On on a daily basis, you know, I I think that. Yes, it's true, you know, there are times when when there could be police who who abused their discretion, but that's that's not, that's not the norm. That's not what happens, I mean, you know, police officers and and firefighters, you know, they're our friends, they're our, they're our neighbors. They're people who are willing to sacrifice their safety and well-being to make sure that we're more safe. And that we have an opportunity, we have an opportunity to 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 protect our own well-being and to protect our our property. I mean, could you imagine in your job, if you were to walk into somebody's office and and you wouldn't, if you were to walk up to somebody's car? And and they would try and hit you with your car, or they'd try and drive away, or they'd pull a weapon on you. I mean, these are the little things that they deal with on a daily basis, and I mean, really, we should thank them for what they do. And so that was one of the reasons why I I went out to support our police officers.
So our demonstration was to thank the first responders.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yet I'm amazed, because I don't see that hitting the papers.
Yeah.
You know, I see everywhere that vilified the police.
Right.
That hits front news.
It's it's not sensational to say, this is a police officer, he is my neighbor, he is my friend, thank you for working for us. You know, there's, there's, there's no sensationalism in that, there's no headline in that. You know, this person puts his life on the line, you know, maybe not every day, but is willing to do so every day.
More than I do.
More than I do every day, I can tell you that for a fact, you know, and and they just need to be celebrated, and they don't ask, they don't ask for a lot. They really don't, you know, they 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 just, they deserve our support, and I was happy I had the opportunity to give them support and and to show up there. I brought my wife and my kids, and it was nice, we had a good time.
That's, that's, it's Milford.
It's Milford, it's Milford, it's our community.
Now, you mentioned we have a dual tax rate.
We do.
Some people don't understand what that means.
Right.
You want to explain it to us?
Well, sure, so our residents, our residents, our households, our residences pay a a different and lower tax rate than our businesses do. And in Milford, we have a lot of businesses, we have a manufacturing base, we have a a large retail base, we have a lot of professional businesses. And and their contribution to our taxes allows us to offer the numerous services that Milford does. Without having, you know, a very harsh impact on our property taxes. And so if you speak to someone in Medway who has to buy special bags if they want to throw the trash away.
Designer trash, my daughter used to buy these little tiny yellow bags in Worcester.
Yeah.
At three bucks a piece.
Absolutely, absolutely, and so, you know, we don't have to to do that, we we have leaf pickup, we have leaf trucks that come. And they take our leaves off of our sidewalks, and so, you know, the 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 dual tax rate, although, you know, s- some businesses. May feel that there's a a measure of unfairness to having that dual tax rate, it does provide a lot of services to our residents, but I think more importantly. We've had it for so long that it's it's a very difficult thing to unwind. So hopefully, if we can revitalize Main Street and we can get more people shopping in Milford, we're going to have plenty of profits for those business owners.
But Pat, whether it's difficult or not.
Yeah.
Would you unwind it?
I don't see how we could, and and I look at some of the pains that people go through, you know, so my. My father has run a business in this town for a long time, and and, you know, I mean, taxes, no one likes to pay taxes.
Right.
You know, but I I think it 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 gives us an opportunity to do so many things, like not have to pink slip twenty-five percent of our teachers. It gives us opportunities to buy things like new leaf removal trucks, that that it's, it would be a very, very difficult thing to unwind. And I think we'd, we'd have to come to terms with the number of services that we lose if we chose to do that. So I I think it's a very, it's a very difficult question.
Or you'd have to significantly increase home taxes.
Absolutely right.
You know, when I see friends of mine on an average house paying nine, ten thousand.
Right.
It's an eye-opener.
You know, and 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 we, I mean, even, you know, communities closer, with, you know, people in Hopkinton paying twelve, fourteen, sixteen thousand dollars a year. In taxes for their home, I mean, it's just, it's an incredible burden, and it's not a burden that I'd want to put on the residents of Milford. So again, it's a, it's it's a dual tax rate, we've had it for a long time, it creates a lot of benefits. But like anything else that has many benefits, it has, it has some negative sides as well.
Now, we turned down the restaurant tax in Milford, but went for the hotel tax. Thoughts?
Well, you know, now, now, this is, this is me being very provincial, right? But the people who are coming in those hotels and staying in those hotels, they aren't, they aren't from Milford.
Exactly.
And the people who are eating in our restaurants probably are from Milford. And and so, you know, I I honestly, I wouldn't change that, I think it happened just the way that it should. And, you know, very selfishly, it's it's for us, and it's for our community, if it's benefiting us, then I want it to be a benefit to us. And and if we can find a way to pass the cost on to people who aren't part of our community, I'm okay with that.
Anytime you travel.
Yeah.
Everywhere I go, I pay a hotel tax. So I felt pretty good at saying I should get some of that back.
Well, you know, it's it's funny, so I I have traveled a lot in my professional career, and I traveled a lot in New York City and in New Jersey.
Oh, my god.
I mean, it's, it is, it's jaw-dropping, I mean, the the amount, so in New York City, you have county tax, state tax, you have city tax, you have occupancy tax.
Dog tax, cat tax, rodent tax.
A tax for everything, you know, so I mean, really, eve- even with, even with our our, the tax that we put on on hotels, it's not exorbitant. I mean, it's not something that would drive people away from our town, and it's it's enough of a little bit extra, and it's applied in in the right place, I I think it was thoughtfully done.
Well, I remember when we looked at the six percent, and we looked around to say, where's the closest town that doesn't have a hotel tax?
Right.
You'd have to drive thirty-five minutes.
Right.
Okay, so I'm going to save eight bucks, but I'm going to spend, well, back then, gas was three fifty a gallon.
Right.
I'm going to spend two gallons each way to save that money, somehow, it didn't seem.
It's just not practical.
But, you know, I do agree with you a hundred percent on the fact that, I don't know the last time I rented a hotel room in Milford.
You know, it's funny, I I I do. And it was because my in-laws were staying in town, and my wife and I wanted just to kind of get out for the night, and we wanted to stay in a hotel. And so we did it because we chose to, so and that was the only time I've ever rented a a hotel in Milford. So, and that was the only time I've ever rented a, a hotel in Milford.
So, once?
One time.
The million bucks we get seems like a good deal to give off.
It seems like a pretty good deal to me.
Marijuana dispensary in Milford. Any thoughts?
Well, it's, it's a legal business, and it's a legal business in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And so long as it's not creating any undue security issues in our town, I am in support of legal businesses.
What can we do to encourage more businesses to come to Milford?
Well, I think there's a whole host of things that we can do. I've been talking to a lot of business owners who either operate or would like to operate businesses in the town of Milford. And they tell me about how, how it's relatively more difficult to open a business in the town of Milford than say it would be in the town of Hopkinton. And I, I think that one of, it was explained to me by one person I was speaking to over the course of the weekend, that Milford tries to fit your business into a box, as opposed to saying, "Well, what is your business, and how can we welcome your business into the community?" And so, I, I think that there are a number of ways that we can encourage business. I mean, frankly, I think that there are ways that we can make Main Street more inviting, you know, for businesses. I think that, you know, we have a, a pretty serious parking issue on, on Main Street. I mean, how are you gonna park your car and walk around if you can't park your car, right? I mean, that's, that's a big issue, that's probably one of the things that we need to address. But we also need to address the way that we encourage businesses to set up shop. Are we business-friendly enough? You know, I, I, are there things that we can do to encourage people to invest their time and their money in operating a business in Milford? I think that there are a whole host of things in there. They have to do with, you know, the way that we approve businesses, the way that we zone businesses, the way that we support businesses through infrastructure. And I think all of these pieces can be put together in, in a long-range development plan. We can use input from the community to inform us as to the best way to move forward on that, to find out what's practical and what's not practical. And, and quite frankly, I'm willing to put everything on the table. You know, do, do we need to look at some of the properties, some of the business properties as mixed-use? Should we have housing on the upper floors, and should we have retail on the lower floors? You know, are there ways that we can zone for that? So, the people who own those buildings would have to improve the residences in such a way that they'd be earning a high rent. So, it would be a, a more, I, I hesitate to use the word luxury, but more upscale living situation, so we're attracting the right, the right residents there, you know. So, I think that there's a whole host of things on the table that we should talk about, and I quite frankly think every single one of them merits discussion.
We're worried about the budget coming out of Boston. We keep hearing that, you know, Charlie's gonna have to make some pretty hard decisions. If we get cut, anything in particular, and how would you approach it? Anything that you'd cut out?
Well, you know, I, I, I have to admit that whenever I look at budget cuts, I would address them the same way that I addressed budget cuts in the school department. Because for, for many, many years, for the first, matter of fact, four years that I served in the school committee, we had to cut, we had to cut, we had to cut not only programs, but, but people as well, which is just, it's heartbreaking. And, and the only way to do it is to try, in my opinion, the only way to do it is to try and find those savings by going line by line through the budget, and, and finding the services that are gonna have, or, or cutting the line items that have the least amount of impact on the services. You know, we, we were able to, when I was in the school committee, when we had a zero percent increase, we were able to find a way to cut our budget, but not have an undue effect on class size.
And I think people forget that when the FinCom, but it's really town meeting. Because let's face it, the FinCom, as I've said, are, to me, the most influential powerless people in town hall. Because nobody has to listen to them.
Right.
They don't even get, they get one vote. Out of the fifteen FinCom members, the only reason we get votes is we run for town meeting member. But when you look and you say, "Okay, we're gonna give you a flat, we're not cutting your budget."
Right.
Well, not cutting your budget.
It's cutting the budget.
It's cutting the budget. Because if inflation, I mean, last year didn't go up, but if inflation goes up two percent, and we give you zero.
Right.
You gotta cut two percent of forty million out the door.
Right, right. And those are hard choices to make, you know, and they're unfortunate choices to have to make. And, and when you make those choices, not only is there a program impact, but there's a human impact, you know. And I've had, and, and so, the way that I've done it successfully on the school committee is by taking, again, and I've said this word four times, and I apologize, I'm gonna keep saying, it's a very thoughtful approach. I mean, how can we cut it in a way that's going to have the, the least impact on the citizens of Milford? And how can we find a way to, to cut what may have been, boy, this is gonna be a strange word, acceptable waste? How's that, how's, how's that for a term? So, it's, it's something that, you know, we thought it was okay to fund when, when we knew we had the money to fund it, but, but once, once the money's gone, then that has to go first. You have to find those first, and then you have to go line by line and find the other pieces. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a terrible task.
Especially when you live in a little town.
We're not a giant municipality, you know, we don't have billions of dollars coming through our budget. I mean, now, we are, this year, I believe, will be a hundred and two million dollar organization, the town of Milford. You know, so, I mean, we're, we're, we're a big organization, you know, and there's certainly a lot of revenue coming through. But, you know, we also make small choices that have big impacts on people's lives, and we have to make sure that we, that we're doing those in, in the right way. And so, when it comes time to cut, as it will again, I mean, we will have time to cut, you know, we have to just, just do it in the right way.
How do you look at your neighbors? I remember coming home and having my daughter say, "It's your fault, you hurt the special-needs kids." I said, "Excuse me? Me, myself? Yes, you didn't give us enough money." It was like forty-three million, back then, forty-three million, and I think that was plenty of money, but, but to her, it was, "Okay, you were on the FinCom, you're a town meeting member, you should've voted for more money for our programs."
Right.
It's hard, though, to look at neighbors and all and say, "What do you say to them?"
You know, there isn't, there isn't always more money. I, I think that's the problem, and I sort of go back to how I budget my household, you know. You can't budget your household in anticipation of having some windfall sometime in the near future.
No, no Holland money tree out in front of your garden?
If, if there is, someone's been picking it clean before I can ever see what's going on, and I can tell you that. And, and, you know, and it's, it's hard, because I think that any elected official has to weather criticism that, of things that they do, and, and hopefully, that elected official, you know, put enough thought into it. So, when they had to make those very tough decisions, they felt that they were making the right decision. And, and all you can do is say, you know, "I, I did what I thought was best, and, and as a member of the school committee, and, and if I am so lucky as to be elected to the Board of Selectmen, I, I can make that same promise. I'll always do what I think is best, based upon as much input as I can gather from the people around me." And, and that's not gonna make everybody happy, but it's the best answer, and it's the honest answer.
So, now I come full circle. Patrick, I'm from Milford, why should I vote for you?
Because the most important thing to me is, is quality of life in Milford. I think that we can put together a development plan for our Main Street that is going to make that area of town a place where our community wants to congregate. I think that we lost something when we lost that aspect to downtown, and, and I'd like to see it come back. I'd like to see the for-lease signs go away, I'd like to see the empty storefronts be filled up with the types of, of shops and services and restaurants and salons that people wanna frequent and people wanna, wanna visit. You know, I, I want to hopefully make existing businesses on Main Street, multi-generational businesses. And I'd like to introduce new businesses that people wanna frequent, that people wanna shop in, right here in our community, so we have people who live in our community, who feel confident that they can do business in our community, and they can run a retail business, and they can afford to pay for a home and to send their children to college, because I think it, it makes this a better place to live, and it, it makes Milford a place that we'll all enjoy more.
As always, my hat is always tipped to people like Pat and everybody else who get up and not just talk about what could be, but actually try and make it happen. So, I've always said it, I'll never ask you to vote for a specific candidate, but I'll beg you to become informed. Find out what the two candidates for Selectmen are all about, and then pick the one that you feel most comfortable with. But most importantly, come that first week of April, get out and vote. And I'm sure that both candidates will have people who'll help you make that one-mile trip.
Absolutely.
Down to the polling stations.
It's a guarantee.
So, to our six loyal viewers, thank you for joining. Maybe it's seven now with the, with the Holland family watching. Thank you for watching, may God bless, and I look forward to seeing you at the polls, and hope it's a better day then than tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.